Calling the August 28th briefing session to order of the Spokane City Council. And roll call, please.
Council President Keneer.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle. Do we know if he's going to be?
I don't see him.
I'm not sure.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Sapon.
I think he'll be joining us.
He's right there. He's here.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Bingle is absent unless he's going to be coming later.
Thank you. First off, we have two interviews. And the first one, Jacobi, is Kami. Welcome. Tell us about yourself.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Hopefully, my video and sound is working. I seem to be having a little bit of Internet challenges today.
We see you and we hear you.
My name is Kami Eakin. Okay, great. And I am the CEO of House Services. I've been with the organization for 20 years and moved to Spokane in 2007. And primary focus has been workforce development along with community involvement to focus really on how do we help get people out of poverty and move into family-supporting wages. And so I've been very interested in becoming more civically involved. And the role with the PFD seems to be a good fit for kind of what I'm hoping to achieve as a community member in Spokane.
Thank you. Council, do you have questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, Kami, thank you so much for joining us and for applying for this position. Something that has been on my mind quite a bit for the last few months, going back to the Lunar New Year celebration that took place on one of the PFD's facilities, is currently, right now, there are rules in place that prevent folks using the PFD facilities from contracting with vendors who might be providing culturally appropriate foods. And I would just like to hear from you, kind of how you view that, and if that's something that, as the representative from the city, you would have an interest in maybe changing on the PFD.
Well, I think you bring up a very interesting point, and it's something that we have been working on organizationally as well as just kind of a personal belief. So, in my opinion, DEI and making sure that we are culturally appropriate is the business of us as a people and as citizens of Spokane. So I would certainly want to look at what the current policy is and evaluate that based upon how do we ensure that we are supporting small businesses, especially those from the BIPOC community, and that we are offering culturally appropriate events that help us all garner and learn more about those that live around and with us.
Great. Thank you very much, Kami.
Anybody else?
Sure.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Sapon, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Kami. I kind of have a similar-ish question or a kind of one that puts that in conflict with some recent event at a PFD facility. The Matt Shea and Trump event was last-minute switch to the podium, and there's been questions about how that happened. So I just wonder how you would address something, like what's your philosophy going into something that might be in contrast to a DEI philosophy of events like that?
Well, I think that I would want to better understand kind of what the structure and the rules are, and who is able to schedule events. And then I think I would want to dig in and with the other board members to determine, is this an appropriate usage of public facilities? And how do we ensure that we kind of separate out the belief system of potentially someone who's coming in and the stance of the city and of the PFD on ensuring that we are a diverse and inclusive community?
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? Councilmember Sapon?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Council--
Hi, Kami. Councilmember Wilkerson here, and thank you for your answers. Really resonate. I just want to know, the PFD even have a DEI statement? So that would be my first concern, if they do or if they don't. So that might be a place to start.
That certainly sounds like that's a really good place to start. I can share that in my own organization, for House Services, we started efforts on really focusing in on DEI, following the murder of George Floyd, like so many, to make sure that our practices and policies were in alignment with our beliefs and our values. And we have gone on this three-year journey of ensuring that we are very focused on DEI efforts. We recently, well, in the last two years, we created an employee advisory group that consults with us on policy decisions, vetted out change to our mission statement, and the language that we want to use to ensure that we are equity-centered in all of our decision-making. So I would bring forward those same efforts with the PFD Board to start that conversation, because I think it's critical as a community that we have a strong position and stance.
Thank you so much for that.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate you putting yourself out there and volunteering for this. And when are we voting on this, Jacobi?
Tonight.
Oh, and we're going to vote tonight. You don't have to be here, but we are going to vote tonight, and you will hear if you tune in. That would be the quickest way to hear if you've been confirmed. So thanks again.
I will try and tune in. I'm out of town right now, but we'll try and make it. Thank you so much for your consideration. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacobi, who's next?
Brian, Bicycle Advisory.
Brian, Bicycle Advisory. Welcome. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you. My name is Brian Faltese, and I'm excited to be part of the Bicycle Advisory Board. I've lived in Seattle, got to experience their bicycle infrastructure in Washington, DC. Most recently, though, and my broadest experience, was I was the operations manager for bringing Lime scooters here to town, the first year and a half of their operation. And that experience led me to experience more of the shared mobility and what some of other cities around our country and North America have done. And I'd love to bring some of those same experiences to Spokane where we could, we're just getting going on some of our bike infrastructure, and I want to make sure that I'm part of the discussions, but it's great when it's completed.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you.
Guys, come on. Something fun. Something fun. Okay. Mr. Sapon, you have a question? Your hands up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I can ask one. I was just wondering what you see as kind of the priorities here in Spokane around bike infrastructure?
Absolutely. So as a cyclist, one of the things that I think most about is how do we eliminate car versus bicycle pedestrian interaction. At some of the recent bike lanes downtown where you're separating cars, like the travel lane with parked cars is an excellent example, protected bike lanes, I think the more we can do, the better it's going to be for everybody's safety. You're avoiding cars mixing in with bicycle traffic and having to swerve. So I think overall, it'll create a better experience for everybody, driver and bicyclists, if we could separate them more.
I'm going to ask, it's not a trick question, I promise you, but we've had a lot of issues with Lime scooters and pedestrians and people not following the rules. Rules are printed right on the scooter, so it's not hard. If you can't read, it's a problem, but if you can, it's not. So how would you, what would be your recommendation for making sure people, number one, are following the rules? And how to enforce? And then what's Lime's responsibility for making sure that their rules are followed and that people are using scooters responsibly?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. So I think the technology is outstanding, so we have the option to, anytime I open an app, there could be the rules put in place so that I have to acknowledge it every time. But I think importantly, that when you recognize that people are riding on sidewalks, it's because they don't feel safe riding on the road. So what we need to do is have adequate infrastructure so that scooters, electric bikes, bicycles can, in those high-density areas, find a safe place to ride, where they're not mingling with pedestrians or window shopping, taking their time, not trying to necessarily get to a destination quickly. So I think as far as Lime goes, their responsibility would be to educate the customer and work with the city to make sure that infrastructure is adequate so that everybody has a place within our city.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Hi there. This is Karen, and you will love this, because we have been meeting with the bicycle, the staff. And what we're trying to address are people with disabilities who are on sidewalks with guide dogs, wheelchairs, walkers, and how we work to educate, especially downtown, how we work to educate people that are utilizing scooters and the Lime bikes to understand that that's a scary situation when you've got a guide dog and you're walking down the street and a scooter's coming close at you. It's really terrifying for that dog. We had our first great meeting and some really good input, so as you get into this, hopefully you'll be able to provide some of your insights, too, because it really is regarding education and making sure that people are following the rules and that we're not doing it just to be difficult, that there are reasons why people shouldn't be, you know, on the sidewalks.
Absolutely. And that's a great point. And I think the more we can do to educate people from the start.
Right.
So when automobiles came, horses and automobiles had the similar kind of interaction. And I think the more we expand our options to alternative transportation from cars within the city, the better the interactions will be long-term as well.
Well, I look forward to your input on those issues. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate you putting yourself out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacobi, are we going to go to study session right now?
Exec.
Oh, sorry. Exec session. Oh, I'd rather go to study session. Exec session for 30 minutes. It is 3:00, that's not accurate. It is 3:45 right now by my clock, so we should be out at 4:15. And we'll resume our, yes?
And it's an executive session for pending litigation.
Litigation. Thank you.
First off, on page six, sorry, page eight, we have, need a motion to substitute number 19 for the most recent version. So, do I need to suspend the rules, Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
No, I do not. Okay. So, do we have a motion to substitute number 19 for the most recent version?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, thank you. And then, moving into the legislative agenda, we have a request to defer Resolution 0068 indefinitely.
Second?
No, we need a motion.
Oh, so moved.
Are you suspended? You just deferred it?
Deferred indefinitely.
Which, which item?
0068.
Here.
Oh, yes, okay, yeah.
All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Who was, who seconded, please? All right, thank you. Any discussion? 0068, motion to defer indefinitely.
Okay.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, sorry. So, this, when we're suspending indefinitely, is that because we're going to be looking at a different resolution for this?
I believe so.
Are you going to substitute?
Okay, so, any more discussion?
I don't think I can substitute it because it's a different.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, going further down on the list, there's a request to suspend the council rules. We'll need to do that first, and add the following items, 0075.
I move to suspend to add an item, 0075.
Do we have, so, this is just, so, Councilmember Bingle, this is just suspending the rules for just this item? And, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now, I need a motion to add the following items, 0075.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I just, Councilmember Bingle, I know that you've, you've had your hands full not being in the office, but I did send out the, the resolution over the weekend with an email kind of discussing that this, what we tried to do was combine concerns from the providers that we've talked to, discussions that we've all had, so we tried to put everything in this with, with a different structure around it. So, I'm hoping that you've got that information. If you need it, I can send it to you again. But, I just wanted to let you know that we were grateful that we had some of the conversations we did, because I think it helped us better define where we wanted to go with this.
Okay, any other discussion? So, I'm going to add a little twist here. There was some discussion earlier about susp, or deferring this until after the Council of Governments holds their meeting on the 8th of September. And, Jacobi, I don't know if we can do this here, or should we wait until ledge session?
Do it anytime. The, the motion on the table is to just add this to tonight's agenda.
Correct.
So, I wouldn't move forward with that motion.
Okay, all right. All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. And you're saying then we should wait until the ledge session if we want to defer this, till after the 8th?
I would do it now.
Okay.
So, the public are aware.
Okay. And I would need, obviously, I can't make a motion, so, what I'm saying is, we have a council of a Council of Governments on the 8th, that will be meeting with the county and other municipalities. So, does it make sa, I'm posing that it does, posturing that it does make sense to wait until we get our information from that Council of Governments, and then pass this, or not at that time?
You know, we talked about this. We have had so many group meetings, so many discussions. I think there are really a lot of groups, including service providers, including staff, that want us to make a decision on direction. And, I just think to hold that, let us be the leader in this. Let us step up and say, this is what, this is what we want to do. We, we're, we're going to back this.
Okay.
Rather than keep it, this ongoing discussion.
And I'm not, I'm just asking the question, do we want to consider deferring this? Go ahead, Council.
Yeah, I guess I'm not entirely sure what would come out of the Council of Governments conversation. Obviously, if there's a real collaborative, regional-focused conversation, that would be good, but I'm not sure what would come out of that that would change this resolution in particular, because I think this really just sets up, in my mind, kind of our own sideboards and restrictions that we think would make sense for a regional authority. And I'm, I'm not entirely sure that that would change out of that. That being said, I mean, I'm, I'm always happy to have more conversation, but we've had a whole heck of a lot of conversations, so.
I would not support that.
Councilmembers?
I was just going to ask if that meeting, wasn't it focused on Measure 1, on that meeting, on the September 8th?
I think we get an hour for.
That's for each, oh.
Yeah.
One hour each.
Yeah.
So, it's just not specific.
So, I'm not sensing any support for deferring. Okay. Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I think, as we had our last meeting on this topic, that the, at the Council of Governments, it would be 90 minutes, two hours dedicated to this issue. But, yes, I, I hear everybody's concerns and those kinds of things. It's frustrating for me, obviously, having been in this conversation.
Is there more?
We losing?
I don't know. Wait, are you, are you still talking?
Is, after what already happened with the mayor's executive order, that's on, I, I guess I would not like us to defer this.
Okay.
I guess I would not like us to change, because I know we already, we're already putting something else in there, but, I mean, we, we continue to have these conversations, and I think the previous resolution did nothing other than, yes, we're going to continue this conversation through our October 15th. I think we're losing, you know, some facilitators in this, in this process. And, I think we have been the ones, as the city of Spokane, driving this conversation. Like I said, the former council president and I were, were in these conversations, and, and we're driving, I continue to be in these with, you know, now council president Kinnear. I don't, I don't want to see us delay this in any way. I mean, I've been, I've been putting in a ton of effort to keep the valley at the table, to tell us what they need to be partners in this, because we know we desperately need them to partner. And I think that any deviation for us as a city is going to be a signal to them that we're not serious about this, and I think the whole thing falls apart. And I know that that's not our intention. I know that the intention is to, you know, protect city staff and all kinds of things, which I think are very noble goals. But I think we, I think if we change course now, I think this conversation largely dies, which would be heartbreaking for me, because I think we've been doing a decent job of keeping everybody at the table and hearing their concerns, so, doing that what you will, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Right. So, going to go ahead with that. Then we have a request to suspend the rules again, to add Resolution 0076, was, which was the insurance piece that we were briefed on, and, is it public safety? No, it was PIES.
So moved, for the purpose stated?
Second.
All right. Suspending the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then, we, do we want to add, yes, we do want to add Resolution 20230076. Do I have a motion?
So moved, to add 0076.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Which one is that?
It's the insure, you.
Oh, the insurance, all right.
Just to be clear, Council President, this is to add the version that was circulated by Mr. Wright.
Yes.
Correct.
And 952, or something like that?
Yes. Thank you. All right. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, we're going to go back to Resolution 0074, which is appointing blank to fill the position that was mine, District 2. And, Jacoby, do you want to walk us through that, please? Getting your exercise.
Yeah. Thanks. So, with then-Council President Brian Beggs stepping down from the role, Council President Kinnear was appointed to that position, and in that resolution that appointed Council President Kinnear to that role, we kind of laid out the process and timeline for appointing a new member to District 2, Position 1, which was the position she vacated. Council had the opportunity to review nine applications that were collected over about a two-week time span. Nine, nine members of the public submitted applications for the role, and six of those, based on councilmember priorities, were interviewed. And, we're at the point now, after interviews, where members can bring forward an applicant to, to fill this role.
Okay. And then, we did receive an email from your LA regarding additional question that was asked by Councilmember Cathcart, and the answers that he received. Did you want to address this?
Yeah, yeah. So, I had a couple of questions that I wanted to ask the candidates, or the applicants, last week, and we only had time to each ask one in the formal interview, so I submitted a second one through email, so public record and all that. But really, it was just to help inform me, but just in full transparency, wanted to make sure the council had the question and the answers, and really, it just pertained to kind of how, what, what sort of lens they would view issues pertaining to Northeast Spokane. And so, that was, that was the crux of the question, but both the question and the answers were circulated to council.
Just to be clear, so, we had, all of us had, the rules are really, you know, they're a little complicated around this issue, so we all had the opportunity to ask questions prior to the selection of the six candidates. Your question was circulated the day before, which does technically violate council rules, so we all have to recognize that. We all got the answers to those questions, so that we could make an evaluation of the people, the six people who we, who we interviewed, five, actually. So, we're needing to fill in this blank now? Mr. Byrd? All right. So, does somebody want to make a motion? Or do we already have one?
Well, I circulated the person that we're advancing.
Okay.
Which would be the nominee, Ryan Orlak, to the position.
I'll second.
So, the motion would be to substitute the version of the resolution that Councilmember Wilkerson circulated this morning. I just want to point out that there is one other addition to that resolution, which is a final resolved clause that specifies that this person would start on Wednesday, at 12:01 a.m. on Wednesday. Allows some time for me to do some HR stuff, so.
Okay. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Surely, you have some discussion.
I'll.
All right, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, based on this person's interview, and even response to Councilmember Cathcart's question that he asked online, and the references that were put forth, I was duly impressed. He took it over the top, when he said he read the 420-some-page budget already, which I had to admit, I had not completely completed myself. So, kudos to you, and we welcome that type of commitment to this council.
And I would say that all of, everybody that applied for this, they, they put in really good effort on making the application, getting it in, and providing the interviews. For me, there were two really solid individuals that floated to the top, and I could take, I could take both of them, one or the other. I'm, I'm fine with that. I think this is going to be a really good opportunity for learning, and Ryan has got a lot of experience in the community already, working with Priorities Spokane. We just, a few months back, did a whole community discussion on priorities, and what we, what the community would like, issues the community would like to see addressed, involving other organizations and other providers in Spokane. So, there's a lot of knowledge there, as we talk about homelessness, as we talk about mental health and crime. So, I, I think that he is going to be a good fit for this position, and he's going to learn a lot, and it just might be that we're mentoring somebody that will stay involved in city government, the next generation, and want to continue to make a difference. So, I'm pleased to offer him this opportunity.
I'll comment that I was noticed and impressed that Ryan Orlak was the one candidate who addressed his connections to the district, and emphasized his involvement in the district, and representing the whole district and the community, having invited people over to his house in times of conflict, and resolving that conflict. And he emphasized that that would be a part of, a big part of his role, and that's really important in our jobs, is to represent our constituents here in the city. And I'm confident he will have the skills to do the work that we do up here.
Councilmember Cathcart, did you want to? Councilmember Bingle, did you want to comment?
No, thank you.
Okay. So, I will say, this was a tough decision, because as Councilmember Stratton pointed out, it came down to the wire for me, two really good candidates, and I was torn and vacillated, back and forth. But, I think this is probably the best choice, and so, I will support this. So, all in favor of this? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Great. Thank you all. And, Jacoby, I think that's all the work we have to do right now, and then we'll come back at 6.
Council President, can, I go, I was walking out while you did the Salvation Army contract, and I just had a few questions about that one. I was wondering.
Well, I would not be able, I'm not the one to answer, so, do we have?
Easier now than later, I think.
Certainly.
Thanks, Jim, for coming down.
Of course.
I know, we didn't have any conversations from last time, when we deferred it, and I don't think I got full clarity around a couple of the reasons why I asked for a deferral, which was greater clarity around the costs, and why the costs were going up to $750,000. You sent the list of the prior months, and only one month was above that amount, so it didn't really look like an average. I'm, I'm not clear about how you came to that number, and if the service has changed at all.
Yeah, so, thank you. Great question. So, and I'm sorry, I, I think I was using the term average. Really, what we did was, we did kind of a guess of what we thought costs could go to, so that we wouldn't have to come back. The 750 number was originally proposed by Eric Finch, when he was still in the interim role, after reviewing the contracts during the, the various months, to say, we don't expect that a month would ever go over 750. So, if they don't spend all of the funds, the, the order that it would spend in would be that ARP dollars would be left, and those would just be recaptured. So, we could make an adjustment, and we could, you know, shrink the amount, but as you mentioned, right, we don't want to come back if something does come up, and so, we feel confident that, that that's enough money to carry us through, and we may have some leftover.
So, I guess I'm trying to get clarity around that. So, it's like a $750,000 cap, but if they don't reach it, then we recoup it.
We can, yes.
But if they go over, then, then we have to come back, and, but that's over the course of the whole contract period.
Of the remaining months. Yes, yes. And I wouldn't anticipate, based on what they've spent to date, that they would go over that amount.
All right. I guess, I guess it's difficult to grasp my, grasp my hand, head around it, because I feel like, aren't we contracting a certain expectation of services, but yet it can fluctuate so much that we're not really sure? And I'm trying to get clarity around that in the contract, because that's been the biggest question, is, what is a bed number? How does it work with the surplus? And how do we end up spending way more than what we've contracted?
Yeah. So, I would say, throughout, this has been a very unusual process from, for us. Typically, we would put out an RFP for a specific dollar amount, and then, the provider would have to fulfill those services for that dollar amount during the course of the, the year, because of the emergency measure that took place to bring in a new provider, and the rapid increase in the number of beds that happened. You know, when guardians took on, they were really only serving, like, a little bit over 100 for those first couple of months, and then that quickly, in the wintertime, went past 350, especially during the warming center months. So, I would say that this is highly unusual, and not how we would generally do it. We would typically say, this is your budget, here is what you're contracted to do, but that's been a moving target, both for them and for us.
And then, I had some questions around the federally negotiated indirect costs. What's their current indirect cost? I know you talked about this, but just to get clarity for everyone, the current one, and what's it going to be in the new contract?
So, and I'm sorry, I don't have their exact federally negotiated rate, but I believe it's 24-point-something percent, and their federally negotiated rate stays the same. If they choose to bill less than that, and my understanding is, is that Salvation Army has committed to billing less than that indirect rate, then we can, you know, recoup that savings in that way, but we can't write into a contract that we would, that their rate would be a lower percent than their federally negotiated rate. Now, in the future, if we issue a new contract, and we ask them for a budget to operate the facility during a specific period of time, and they provide a budget to us that says, here's what we plan to charge and need in administrative costs, then we can accept that and not go above that. They wouldn't be able to charge above and beyond that, even if their federally negotiated rate was above that budgetary amount. It's a little bit nuanced. I hope that, I spoke about that clearly.
Yeah, and I think another part that's been confusing to a lot of people in the community, too, is what counts as indirect versus direct costs? And what can they bill on? Because it seems like they're, they're charging that indirect cost on things that they don't, services they don't provide. So, like, an example would be, apply the porta-potties that they contract out, they still can collect that indirect costs. I think they're doing it pretty much on everything. And so, is there a standard? Is this normal with all our contracts? Is this abnormal?
So, I would say to start off, that none of our contracts have this significant porta-potty cost, so it's unusual, and I don't have anything to compare it against. There is what's called a modified MTDC, Modified Total Direct Costs, and there are exemptions of things that cannot be, have indirect costs applied against them. So, for instance, capital expenses can't have costs, indirect costs applied against them, over $5,000. And there's some other ones, and I'm happy to send the language to you. Something like a porta-potty service would be eligible to have indirect costs associated with it, because of the accounting and the staff management that go into it. So, they do have staff that clean those prior to the porta-potty company coming and pumping them out, so that would be considered an eligible expense. And, I, I think one of the ways that I like to think about it, is that costs can be billed directly or indirectly, and so you could have an accountant, right, who could be billed directly to a grant, if they can show via a time tracker or some other method that allows them to say, I spent five hours specifically working on only this grant. If you don't utilize a time tracker or some other method that allows you to specifically allocate certain hours to a grant, that's when it falls under an indirect cost rate. So, it's less about the particular activity, as to whether or not it's indirect or not, and more about how do you bill that. So, we have some agencies who would bill something as an indirect cost, that other agencies may bill as a direct cost, depending on their policies and procedures.
So, I guess to follow up on that, is Salvation Army currently billing staffing the day-to-day operations as a direct cost?
Yes, they are.
So, would those individuals on the day-to-day who clean the porta-potties already be accounted for in those direct costs?
They would, but there's indirect costs associated with those staff. So, you have a staff person who's being directly billed, but each one of those staff people would have admin, or an accountant, or HR, or something like that, that would be billed against them at a specific rate.
So, Councilmembers, opponent, if there are other questions, you might want to just write them down and submit them, and get them prior to?
Tonight.
6.
Are there any other questions that I can provide?
No.
No, those were the main ones.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Would you like me to, sorry, would you like me to send the actual federally negotiated rate percentage? I can send that over.
All right. So, we're done, and we will see, we will see you all at 6 o'clock for our legislative session, and we are adjourned.